I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 3, 2014, City of Temple City, City Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Present.
Councilmember Iskara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Bloom?
Here. For the invocation tonight, we have Pastor Frank Wang with the Bethlehem Lutheran Church at 5319 North Halifax. Bethlehem is a multicultural community. The campus is shared by a Chinese church and two Korean churches. Services are in English, Chinese, and Korean. Pastor Frank has been serving the Lutheran ministry since 2005. He's a solo pastor and he is also a chaplain, serving in the U.S. Army Reserve. Please rise for the invocation.
Oye people of God, let us pray. Holy Father, your word says, "He who dwells in the shelter of the Most High will rest in the shadow of the Almighty." O Almighty God, our Father, we humbly come before you tonight in thanksgiving. Thank you for your holy presence in our midst, here and now. Humbly I lift up before you, our mayor, Mayor Bloom, a child of your own and a faithful in public service. Thank you for your ordination of him in this office. Send your blessings this way, Father. Grant this man of God the anointing of the Holy Spirit in all his responsibilities, in family and in office. Humbly I lift up before you, Father, all the members of our city council and each employee of our city government and their families. Bless these leaders and servants in all their efforts to bring our city to a new level of peace and prosperity, justice and order that all residents may find fulfillment and happiness in our city. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Father, we believe in your word, in the Bible. Holy Father, you are our God, God of our nation and God of our city. So bless us and keep us. Make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. Look upon us with favor and give us your peace. In your holy name, we thank you and we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And I'd like to invite the Cub Scout Pack 160 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Could the scouts please come forward?
Please place your right hand over your heart. Please say along with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Thank you. I believe Jerry's going to get a quick picture of you. Thank you very much. Okay, we now move to item five on the agenda, ceremonial matters. Five A is a presentation of the Pet of the Month. Lynn Coleman, the new Secretary of the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society Board of Directors, will introduce Rufus, an American Staffordshire terrier approximately six months old and weighing forty pounds.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much for this opportunity to introduce a very special fellow to you tonight, Rufus. As you said, he's six months old, weighs about forty pounds, and he is really just a big puppy, a love bug who's very easy to please, very eager to learn. We found out he's very smart. He sits for treats. He's got us well-trained. We always have treats in our pocket. Come on, ready? Sit, come on, sit, come on. Okay. He also loves to fetch. If we throw one of his favorite toys, he chases it, brings it back to us, and makes us do it over and over again. We also find that he is very good on a leash. He's one of our favorites among our dog walkers. So he's a young fellow that's looking for a home. He's looking for an active family, someone-
How old is he?
He's six months old.
Six months?
Yeah, so he's really just a puppy.
So how big will he get?
He will get, I would say, about another ten, fifteen pounds.
Oh, that's nice.
But he'll wear it very well.
Good watchdog.
He'll be a very good watchdog. They're wonderful family dogs.
They give him treats.
Yes, yeah. So anyone who might be interested in getting to know more about Rufus can contact the shelter at either our phone number or our website. And he would also like me to mention to you that we have a couple of events coming up at the shelter very soon. This month, we are doing a calendar, and we're asking for residents to send in photos of their favorite pets. This will be for 2015.
I have a few.
And twelve lucky pets will be selected. You can find the information on our website about what size photo to submit and what the email address is. And this year is also a very, very special year in the shelter's history. We've been around for ninety years. Since 1924, we've been providing homes for abandoned animals and sheltering them until we could find them their forever homes. So we'll be celebrating this in a number of different ways. And I would like city residents to know that at the end of September, we'll be having an open house and a block party. We'll be closing down the street in front of the shelter. We'll be having food, fun, and games. We'd like to invite them and any pets they've adopted from the shelter as well to join us for a fun activity. And if anyone has a minute, please check out our brand-new, newly-designed website. We're very proud of it. Your residents will find many wonderful, easy-to-use features on how to access shelter services and especially how to adopt the pet of your dreams. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
I walked him out here because I just checked the TV and he couldn't be seen.
Cute. Good puppy.
Councilmember Chavez, last time, said, "Why do we always get these little cute ones? Don't they ever bring bigger dogs?"
Yeah, perfect timing. Beautiful dog.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty dog, lovely colors.
Okay, item five B is a presentation, the Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Program. We have Mark Olson with the Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Program for a brief presentation. Welcome, Mark.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and City Council. We really appreciate this opportunity. Again, my name's Mark Olson. I represent the Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Program. This is a nonprofit program that was created by the state legislature back in 2009 to help combat the spread of a deadly citrus pest that is spreading throughout Southern California. And it's actually a program that's funded by California citrus growers. What we're really concerned about right now is this citrus pest. It's called the Asian citrus psyllid. It was originally found in Asia and has spread from Asia to Brazil, through South America, Mexico, and up into the United States. It was first found in Florida, made its way to Texas, and then California. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation that actually has some slides here. I don't know if we're going to be able to get to that, but this pest is very small. It's about the size of a grain of rice or the tip of your pen. But again, it can be very deadly for citrus because the primary reason is it carries this disease called Huanglongbing, or HLB. Now, the concern is, once a citrus tree is infected with HLB, it will die. There is no cure for it. We've had one tree infected found in California, and that was in Hacienda Heights, so not too far away from here, back in 2012. Good news is, we haven't found any other trees infected with HLB, but there's been a lot of sampling going on because a lot of experts believe that there's going to be more trees found infected in Southern California and possibly Temple City with HLB. HLB is not harmful to humans or to pets. So if you grab a piece of citrus off your citrus tree and eat it and your tree is infected with HLB, it will not harm you at all. But it is very deadly for a citrus tree. It's a death sentence for that citrus tree. Again, there's no cure for it. We've seen a lot of damage done by this disease worldwide. In Florida, there was just a study that came out not too long ago, pegged the damage at $3.6 billion. They've lost over 6,600 jobs, and about seventy-five percent of their citrus is actually infected with HLB now. So it's doing a lot of damage. We're trying to prevent that from happening in California. So what happens is, once the pest becomes established in a specific area, the Asian citrus psyllid, then for whatever reason, a few years later, the disease pops up, and then the pest is what spreads the disease around from tree to tree to tree. So the pest by itself isn't all that harmful, but it's when it starts carrying around this disease from tree to tree to tree. So as you can see, many areas around Los Angeles County are infested with this pest. That's just the reality of it, with as many as seven out of ten residents actually having a citrus tree in their backyard. The pest had a lot of food to feed on and was able to spread all throughout the county regardless of our efforts to stop the spread of it. So we're working very closely with a lot of entities. You know, we're a nonprofit. We also work with the state government, federal government, as well as the Los Angeles County Agricultural Commissioner's Office that does a lot of inspections at various ports of entry, LAX, at nurseries, at farmers' markets. They do quarantine enforcement, and we're also working on some sampling, and that sampling could be going on in Temple City in backyard citrus trees. The California Department of Food and Agriculture will actually take about five different samples off of a citrus tree in cooperation with a resident and send that to be tested for the HLB disease. Because the best thing that you can do to get rid of HLB, the only thing that you can do to get rid of HLB is to remove that tree. And so they're actually going around testing to see if they can actually find HLB in other trees so they can remove it as soon as possible.
So, Mr. Olson, how do, they just come knock on your door and ask to be in and check on your trees?
Yes, yeah, it's in cooperation with the resident. One of the assets that we have on our side is, University of California Riverside found a stingerless wasp from Pakistan that's a natural predator of the Asian citrus psyllid. So the U.S. Department of Agriculture has actually increased their funding to promote this program because what you can do, if you can reduce the populations of the psyllid, then you reduce the chance that the disease can be spread around by these psyllids. So it's a common tactic that's used with invasive pests, and we're trying to use it for the Asian citrus psyllid to reduce the populations of it. So there are releases going on in Los Angeles County of the stingerless wasps to reduce the populations of the Asian citrus psyllid.
Did you know PCC did an article on it last week?
Yes, as well as the Los Angeles Times wrote an article on this not too long ago, too. So it's an effective, it's not a magic bullet, but certainly it's something that can be used in the fight against this. But another thing that we really need help from is residents. Residents play a critical role. There's just so much backyard citrus out there that we need residents to be on high alert. And that means getting out, or whenever you're watering, just inspecting your trees regularly, looking for suspicious pests, looking for signs of the disease, which, you know, can be in early droppings of the fruit, or the leaves will look a little bit discolored. The challenge is, it looks very similar to other problems with a citrus tree, but we're trying to get people to actively get out there and inspect their trees, and we actually have a hotline set up that people can call with any questions. Also, another thing is moving citrus. We're telling people not to move citrus out of the area. If you have that aunt or that uncle that lives up in Sacramento, don't clip off a bunch of citrus off of your citrus tree and put it in a bag and take it up to Sacramento with you. That's how this pest spreads around to areas that it's not in yet. What you can do is share it with your neighbors, share it with people down the street, but just don't take it out of the area is what we're asking people to do. Also cooperating with ag officials if they want to test your tree for HLB, that's a very important thing that we need from residents. And also making sure that you're purchasing any citrus trees from licensed nurseries, local nurseries, things like that. Here's that hotline I mentioned. If you think your tree has HLB, just err on the side of caution and call the hotline and talk to a professional about it, and they can let you know if the tree is infected or not. They may send an ag inspector out there. They may ask you to take a picture of it. A lot of people have iPhones, and, you know, they could actually email a picture to an ag inspector to look at it further. If you think your tree has the Asian citrus psyllid on it, the little pest, you can go talk to your local nursery and see what kind of products work best on the Asian citrus psyllid. So we're also working with cities throughout Southern California. You play a big role as community leaders. It's very important to our efforts to make sure that you know what's going on, you have good points of contact should residents come to you with concerns or questions about this issue. We want to be able to answer them and help you answer them as well. So a lot of people don't know who their state senator is, maybe, or their state senator, but they know where City Hall is. And a lot of times, this is where they come for information first, and then it gets sent out from there on the appropriate authority. So cities around Southern California are playing our PSA on their local government channel, putting out notifications in newsletters. We have Facebook and Twitter. They're following us on those platforms as well. We have a website that can be linked to your website. There's a variety of ways that we can work together using your existing communication medium, so we would certainly appreciate doing that if possible. So, you know, just in closing, we think we have a really good plan in place to stop this. This pest, again, and this disease have done a lot of damage worldwide. We really need to stop that from happening in California. We have a $2 billion citrus industry on the line here, as well as the quality of life and the heritage of citrus throughout Southern California that we've enjoyed for generations. So we look forward to working with you. We wanted to use this as a jumping-off point. Should your constituents have any questions, should residents have any questions, we would certainly be, you know, like to answer those questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
Should an inspector come to our resident's house? Are they from the county, wearing county uniform?
Yes.
With a county badge?
Yes, they will be from the county.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to item six on the agenda, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. I'll call the speakers up. I'd like to ask you to keep to three minutes, your presentation or your discussion. First, I'd like to call Dan DeBoer, I believe it is. Come on up, Dan.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. In January, a number of neighbors and I brought before you a concern we had of traffic safety. And I want to thank you for, and I requested your combined efforts to help us with that on Muscatell. And I want to thank your staff, Ollie and Robert, for working through the situation. They studied it, came up with a solution, and I heard that the measure should take effect sometime in July, so I wanted to thank you for your efforts with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call Constance Hilton.
I'd like to address a problem that I have seen several times, and I was involved in this problem. I live on Dwardy Road, and went, I always took Rosemead Boulevard. Well, last week, I went down Rosemead Boulevard, and off to my left was a big SUV. And I have a little Kia. And that SUV pushed me into the island that you have on Rosemead Boulevard. You know, Rosemead Boulevard used to be Highway 39. I've never heard of islands being put in the middle of the street like they are now. And I think if any one of you went down Rosemead Boulevard and saw the tire marks all along the islands, on those islands, I think it's very, it could have killed me. It cost me three tires, and it cost me a wheel alignment. And I'm on social security, and to be pushed into those islands was very upsetting. And if there was somebody riding their bike along there, I could have hit them and killed them. Also, as you go north on Rosemead, you have a bike area and some islands, but then it stops in the next block. There's no place to ride the tricycle or the bicycle, and there's no islands. So the street is chopped up, and many times, I would try to avoid the intersection at Dwardy and Rosemead Boulevard by turning the street before Ardendale and taking a shortcut to miss that corner. They have now put up a great big cement barrier where a person cannot go take a shortcut up that street any longer. I don't know who planned these islands in the middle of the street, but they're very dangerous. And I'm not alone. There's many people that have hurt their cars. In fact, I was told down at Pet Boys, about once a week, somebody comes in and they have to get a new tire from hitting the islands. Anyway, that's all I have to say in regards to this subject.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how you feel about it, but I think they're very dangerous and they should be taken out.
Okay, thank you. Just a comment, I think, on that. Obviously, Rosemead Boulevard, as it was designed, did include some different features than were there before. It's obviously going to take a while for some people to get adjusted to it. The disconnect on the bike trail between Temple City goes up just above Longdon-
Longdon, yeah.
Yeah, and it stops there. Dwardy Road is in the unincorporated county area, so the bike trails we have in our city, we can only control in our city. So the other jurisdictions have whatever means they have, and I know they just have signs identifying the bike trail without separating that. So sorry you had an incident like that. You know, hopefully, people are courteous in their driving and, you know, they're not moving people off the lanes that they should be in, so we're, thank you for coming. Okay, next is Kenneth-
Nolenberg.
Nolenberg. Good grief.
Kenneth Nolenberg, resident. I'd just like to thank the city's people for providing a digital sign for Doug Sears Learning Center open food truck and art show that was last Friday. And I also would like to thank Ms. Sternquist for being president at the Longdon School today, where they were doing a drive for cancer. And the school has raised about $3,500, and she and a couple of other people that are in the audience were kind enough to be walking for cancer, which is also going to be at the high school, I think it was 27th and 28th?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh? Thank you.
Okay, so this lunch truck thing at Doug Sears? No, I never got notice of that.
I didn't either.
Yeah, did you? Did anybody ever get notice?
I don't know. You're expected.
So-
I'll say that.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Ken. Okay, next I have Donna Georgino.
First, I would like to congratulate the city council and city staff for the adoption of the Park and Open Space Master Plan for Temple City. This plan is the first step towards improving the quality of life for our residents by providing more open space and additional recreational amenities in our community. As you know, one of the keys to the implementation of the plan is going to be the city's ability to obtain funding for the facilities, programs, and services specified in the plan. Currently, Temple City has the opportunity to influence some potential funding for the Park and Open Space Master Plan. SB 1086 is now in front of the Senate Governance and Finance Committee, and if all goes well, it'll be on the ballot in November of this year. The Safe Neighborhood Parks, Rivers, and Coastal Protection Bond Act of 2014 is the first true park bond act in California in over ten years. Although specific dollar amounts have yet to be determined, if SB 1086 passes, it will provide per capita funding as well as funding for enhancements of flood corridors. Both are programs Temple City could use to fund projects in our Park and Open Space Master Plan. I'm here tonight to encourage the city council to take a proactive stance on this bill by sending a letter supporting the bond act, including a robust per capita program and substantial funding for trails grants. Traditionally, when cities don't step up to the plate and support park bonds, conservancies and nonprofits do, and cities are left with token funding. We have a lot at stake this time around, and we need to do whatever we can to make sure that the park bond contains funding in the programs that will benefit the residents of Temple City. So let's let our state legislator know that we need funding for parks and recreation facilities, and we needed the bond structured in a way that'll benefit Temple City's residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Donna. I'd like to have Kathy and Don, you know, if you could please follow up on that.
Very well.
I know we have an item later on the agenda relative to the priorities of what we'll be working on here in the city. Okay, are there any, anyone else like to speak on the items not listed on the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. If members of the city council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Okay, if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent calendar has been unanimously approved. We now go to item eight on the agenda, public hearing. Item eight A is the adoption of Resolution Number 14-4996, ordering the levy of citywide lighting and maintenance district assessments for fiscal year 2014-15. Could I have a staff report, please?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the first of three public hearings tonight related to the budget adoption.
Is your mic, is your mic on?
Having trouble hearing it.
I, oh, I never can do this right. You guys know that. Again, this is the first of three public hearings this evening related to our budget The city has had a lighting and maintenance district since 1979, and the public hearing this evening is required by the State Lighting and Landscaping Act of 1972. The assessments are levied to assist with costs related to street lighting, traffic signals, median maintenance, and park maintenance. In 1997, as a result of State Proposition 218, the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, the city discontinued assessing for park maintenance as it was considered a general benefit rather than a specific benefit. An engineering report is required to be completed annually in order to continue collecting the assessments, and the city council ordered the report on February 4, 2014 by resolution. On May 6, 2014, the city council adopted a resolution declaring the intent to levy the assessments. And for this meeting this evening, the public hearing was noticed and advertised in Temple City Tribune on May 15 and May 19, 2014. I also want to say that our assessment engineers, Harrison Associates, prepared the engineer's report this year, and Carol Hill from Harrison Associates is here if there are any questions. The assessments for 2014-15 remain unchanged from the previous years, and it's anticipated these assessments will generate approximately 330- these assessments will generate approximately $330,000. The current assessment does not cover all costs related to the required maintenance, and as a result, state gas tax funds currently supplements these expenses, and that has been... We've been recommending supplementing the cost with gas tax since 2010. It is recommended that we review the current assessments completed sometime in the next fiscal year as part of our long-range financial planning component of the strategic plan. We've discussed this concept in the past. However, any change to the assessments would require an affirmative vote of the parcel owners, but we can get into that later as we get into our long-term strategic plan. That concludes my presentation. Again, it's a public hearing, so I recommend you open the public hearing and receive public input.
Okay, are there any questions from council members before we do that? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone care to speak on this issue? Okay, if there is no one, I will close the public hearing and go to council comments. Council member, you.
I don't have any comments. This is routine approval. We've been doing it.
Councilmember Sternquist? Councilmember Viscara?
I am commentless.
Commentless.
I've heard that about you.
Yeah, Mayor Protem?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, I think my only comment is what Tracy has already said, and that, you know, we're subsidizing this. It was set up as an assessment district to basically fund certain things, is the cost has arisen, the revenues have not, so at some point, we're going to have to address it, and we talked about doing that as we look at long-term financial planning for the city.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll entertain a council motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 14-4996, ordering the levy of citywide lighting and maintenance district assessments for fiscal year 2014-2015.
Okay, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, item 8A has been unanimously carried. We now go to item 8B, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 14-4997, confirming the factors used for calculating the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2014-15. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second public hearing this evening, and this is to adopt a resolution confirming the annual appropriations limit. This, again, is what we would consider a very routine item but required on an annual basis, and it's required as part of Proposition 4 passed in 1979, known as the GAN limit, to ensure that spending limits were placed on all state and local governments on an annual basis. In 1980, the state legislation added a statute that requires each governing body established by resolution, the appropriation limit. That's what we're doing tonight. Staff has completed the computations using the adjustment factors as required by state law, and the city of Temple City's limit for 2014-15 is approximately 17.4 million, and our appropriations subject to the limitations of 8.7 million are well within the mandated threshold. There is more detail in the staff report on the calculations, but again, considered a very routine action item this evening. So again, I recommend that you open a public hearing, receive input.
Okay, thank you, Director House. Any questions from council members? Okay, if not, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone care to speak on this issue? Okay, if there is no one, I will close public hearing. Any council comments? Councilmember Viscara?
Nothing.
Councilmember Sternquist? You? Mayor Protem?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I moved that we adopt Resolution Number 14-4997, a resolution confirming the factors used for calculating the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2014-15.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Item B has been unanimously carried. We now go to item C. This is the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 city budget, and find that the city is in compliance with Government Code Section 66000. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Presented for your consideration tonight is the proposed 2014-15 annual budget. The document incorporates the changes that were directed by the city council at your study session, as well as it had been reviewed prior to that time by the city council ad hoc committee comprised of Mayor Bloom and Mayor Protem Chavez. At the conclusion of the public hearing, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the budget incorporating any changes you may direct tonight. As you know, we operate under a charter form of government, and the city charter does require that you annually adopt a budget, and staff has prepared this budget with also forecasts for next fiscal year. We submitted the budget to you on April 30th, and as I mentioned, the ad hoc committee reviewed it, and you also held a study session, and we are prepared to recommend adoption of it this evening. In general, I think there's some good news, as well as some areas that are... Things are static, and of course, the static areas reflect the flatlining of a lot of revenues, in particular, sales tax. However, we're pleased that the property taxes have continued to rise, as we had one of the larger increases in the county, and it's my understanding that Temple City is only one of five cities countywide that has now reached the level of its tax receipts prior to the recession. So there's only five cities in LA County that are now back at their assessed valuation that they were at prior to the recession, starting in 2008. So that's obviously a very good sign, and I think that's a testament to the community and the attractiveness that Temple City represents.
Who are the other cities?
Well, I think it's Manhattan Beach, Santa Monica, Arcadia...
Arcadia, Bradbury.
Bradbury.
And San Marino.
San Marino. So it's cities that obviously are considered desirable. It's good to be included in that group. That reflects, I think... I think you've all seen it, and our residents have seen it, and just the property values, too. So the budget itself is a little bit less this year because, you know, so much of what we do is dependent upon grant funding, and with the completion of the Rosemead Project, which was a $20 million project, some of that revenue has already been accounted for, and then we also accounted for the development fees from the Olson Project in the current fiscal year. We are incorporating some of the changes that have been discussed in terms of the process, using zero-based budgeting to maximize operational efficiencies and to help elevate service levels and also the priority-based budgeting. Staff in this document is recommending a number of programs, and they relate to the strategic plan. As you know, we haven't quite completed the strategic plan. I know the Strategic Plan Implementation Standing Committee is working hard to get it done, but unfortunately, for a lot of reasons, we're not quite there yet. However, I think it's really important to note that many of the things that are being developed and proposed in the strategic plan are actually incorporated into this next year's budget. I'd just like to mention a few of those. For example, we're proposing a much more aggressive street maintenance program, which will be in excess of $1.4 million, and that includes primarily the residential streets. There's other funds through grant programs that we can use on major streets, so this is a real... A strong effort to improve our local streets, consistent with the recommendations in the pavement management plan. We're also... With grant funding, plans are underway to initiate additional bikeway improvements on our city's streets pursuant to the Bicycle Master Plan. The Parks and Recreation Commission recently prioritized projects for the new year based upon the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, and funds are in the budget for plans... To develop overall plans for Live Oak and Temple City Park. As you know, the general plan, which is addressed in the strategic plan, work on that is underway, although for the most part up to now, it's been somewhat in the office with the consultant, but I think you'll see a much more earnest outward effort in this coming year to move that along, and we're excited also, as you know, but perhaps the public doesn't, that our new community development director will be starting on June 16th. So he'll be starting with his run-in with his feet on the ground, so we're excited about the general plan, getting geared up and having that person there to oversee that. You also know that we have safer-out-to-school grants, and those improvements, I believe, are out to bid right now, and they do incorporate some of the traffic calming initiatives that have been developed through master planning, and they're also discussed in the strategic plan. And then the public art program is moving ahead. That commission adopted a work program, which you recently saw and approved, and funds are budgeted this next fiscal year for public art projects. And finally, but not providing a complete list, we have retained an architect who will start work on the... Conducting a needs assessment and programming analysis of City Hall, which is one of the prerequisites as part of the P3 project to look at, you know, what the condition of this is. That information is valuable before we can make other decisions about where we go from there. So I mention those just that even though we don't have a strategic plan adopted, many of the things that are identified in the strategic plan, we're moving ahead with and are incorporating to budget. So we're seeing a lot of the planning that's taken place over the last several years now will move into actually an implementation and action stage, so I'm sure the council is excited about that, and I know the staff is as well. And throughout this process, I think it's important also to mention that there'll be a strong citizen engagement process through each and every one of these initiatives as we work with our commissioners and we have workshops with our residents. So I think that's sort of fundamental and inherent through all these programs. Some of the key initiatives, we're pleased that the general fund operations are balanced for both fiscal years with a surplus. We are maintaining the current levels of service within the public safety area, and as I mentioned, we are addressing a more aggressive street maintenance program, and we have funds budgeted for traffic safety with upgrades to traffic signals. I believe that's along Temple City Boulevard, and that is also with grant funding. We have funds budgeted for replacement of the city's street signs. I think, as the council knows, and hopefully many in the community know, as the signs are going up, starting in July, we'll be doing weekly street sweeping. Those funds are reflected in the budget. We are putting aside $100,000 for post... Other post-retirement benefits for future medical liability. We are funding, though decisions still must be made in a number of areas, we are putting the funding in for the purse costs for the part-time employees that at some point in their tenure here have exceeded 1,000 hours, which we're required to pay. But again, there's also a secondary question to that in looking at the overall staffing levels that must be made, too, but to be conservative, we wanted to put those funds in the budget, and they are reflected there. And then pursuant to the council's direction, the art program funding is going to be derived from the Olson Project, which they, as part of the agreement, they agreed to fund, I believe, is $150,000 towards public art. And finally, I should add, there are no cost of living adjustments currently in the budget, and as the council knows, we do now have a formal bargaining unit within the city, and those contract negotiations should commence next week. So with that as an overview, I'd like to ask Tracy now to go through, provide the actual numbers and overview of some of the revenues and expenditures.
I'm going to go ahead and quickly review these overview budget numbers. We did go in quite a bit of detail at the budget study session, so again, I'll just quickly review, but if there's any questions or, you know, I'd be glad to go into more detail. As Don indicated, our revenues actually are a little bit less than... Overall revenues are a little bit less than last year, and that's primarily because of less grant funding as a result of the Rosemead Boulevard project. And then they're even going to be a little bit less the following year as projected, mainly due to we have some highway safety grant funds coming in this year for those safety improvements in traffic signals, and as of right now on the horizon, we're not anticipating any more grant funding in the following year, but that very well could change. Total operations expenditures for all funds is approximately $16.3 million for next year. Equipment is... Equipment replacement is approximately $142,000, and our capital projects for their next year are estimated to be $4.1 million. Total expenditures for all funds next year is approximately $20.6 million. That does include 1.9 from one-time reserves, as designated by council. I've also put the percentage change from the prior year, and again, you can see that budgets really overall dropping, and that's mainly due to less grant funding and less use of one-time reserves, as we had done more in the prior year. Our fund balance reserves, important to this council, our estimated fund balance at the end of this next fiscal year, June 30th, 2015, is still going to be approximately $16.1 million. It's an estimated reduction of estimated fund balance at June 30th of this year, but again, that's a reflection of making conscious decisions to make one-time expenditures that are investments into our community. With the exception of the general fund, most of our other sources of revenue are from the areas of transportation or infrastructure-related projects. Don touched on this a little bit earlier. The two sources of grant funding for this next fiscal year, highway safety improvement for upgraded traffic signals and bicycle transportation for bikeways citywide. This is just... This is an overview of our general fund balance, and I think it's important to point out that we are starting with a fund balance in which to access for one-time funding. We also do have an operating surplus for next year of approximately $33,000. Slim, but yet an operating surplus, something we always try to strive for. We are making some one-time purchases in equipment and capital items and the funding for post-employment benefits. So we do have an overall surplus deficit, but we still have an unreserved fund balance estimated for next fiscal year of approximately almost $700,000. Again, Don touched on this earlier. Overall, general fund revenues are up slightly, 1.1. Sales taxes flat. Property taxes are expected to increase, and license and permits are due to one-time revenues in fiscal year 13 and 14, and that's primarily the Olson Project and the Gateway Project or the Camellia Center Project. Our general fund expenditures are about 10% less from last fiscal year, and we do propose an operating balanced budget in both fiscal years. This is an overview of the general fund budget in the 15-16 year, and as you can see, based on our estimates right now, we will be... We can at least forecast an operating surplus at this time of about $150,000, and with some capital outlay, bringing us down a little bit, but still an unassigned fund balance of almost $600,000. Just to revisit quickly the status of our reserves, our general fund budget reserves do remain, as I indicated earlier, at about $16.1 million, and this represents 136% of our general operating fund. Typically, cities will have an operating reserve of anywhere to 5% to 25% of their general fund budget, and as you can see, we are far above that. Quick reminder of the reserves that we have set aside and the amounts and what they're for. Emergency reserves of $3.5 million. Fleet management replacement, $400,000. Facilities management, $3.5 million. Technology replacement, down to $7,000. We've made some one-time investments over the last couple of years on that. Economic development, $3.2 million, and opportunities for one-time expenditures of $4.4 million. And the other reserves represents the undesignated fund balance that I had referred to earlier, plus some additional reserves we have for some outstanding loans. This is graphically shows you how our fund balance... Our general fund reserves has been reduced over the last couple of years, but again, the council has made strategic investments into the community. Staff recommends a minimum of 100% reserve of the general fund budget of approximately $20 million. As you can see, we still remain substantially above that. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions of... If you have any questions of Dawn or myself or the staff, we would be glad to address them.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one more comment? I wanted to also point out that, as we indicated before, and one of the things that we did in order to balance a budget is we're recommending the elimination of two part-time positions. One would be a management analyst in the community development planning area, and a second would be a community preservation officer. They are budgeted approximately 29 hours to 35 hours a week. That will generate a savings of $124,000. We don't make that recommendation lightly, however, in light of trying to not just adopt a budget, but take a zero-based approach to our budgeting. We looked at the staffing levels. We looked at the workload. And in trying to gather information, for example, in the code services area, we have now four and a half code services officers. It's my understanding that a few years ago, there was a concentrated effort to try to do a lot in that area because very little had been done for quite some time. I believe, looking at the workload now and the results of those efforts, that we can eliminate the part-time position. So we'd still have basically about three and a half, three full-time and one part-time. So we'll still have a very strong code services function. We did some surveying, some nearby cities. Rosemead has three full-time code officers. Let me see, San Gabriel has two full-time and one part-time. Arcadia has two, although I've learned that they are recommending adding a third tonight. So we have four and a half, and I think, you know, I think the same position after the work that's been done up to the last few years, that we can reduce that. So that was some of the rationale for what we're looking at. But again, we look at all the programs in the areas that we have to see if there's areas where we can, you know, reallocate those funds or be more efficient in some other area. And even if you adopt the budget tonight, that won't end that review. My efforts after the adoption of the budget will be to continue to look at the organizational structure, service levels, priorities, and there may be other changes I might be recommending to you based on that review. But this is what's incorporated in the budget for your consideration tonight.
Okay. You may want to address, I know we had some discussion on the staffing for the sheriff. I know in the study session, I know there's been some adjustments to that. I don't know if you want to address that issue at this point.
Well, I'll try. And then we, our original recommendation was to eliminate a 56-hour car and add a motor in place of it. So that would be some lessening service level. After having a discussion with the sheriff and then the last study session, the determination was to put the 56-hour car back in. We also found out that the motor is not available right now because it's such a unique assignment, they don't have a person currently trained to ride a motor in town. So we switched that over to the 40-hour car. So it's pretty close equivalent to the same level of service. And then the captain of the Temple Station indicated that when they have the possibility of a motor available, then they will contact us, and then we'll bring that back to the council for your consideration, whether you would want to switch perhaps the 40-hour car over to the motor car.
Yeah, the motor, basically being the motorcycle.
Yes.
So the question is whether we have a motorcycle in addition to the cars.
Right.
We were trying to go in that area, and then they didn't have anybody there, so that's some of these adjustments.
The motor is best equipped to handle speeding violations using radar, although they can train traffic officers for radar, but that's not their emphasis right now. So we did notice some reduction in moving or speeding violations, but we're comfortable with the basic services that are in this budget that will have a comparable level of services going forward. And we'll have to just bring that back to you at the time if a motor's available, and we can analyze the trade-offs as part of that process.
Okay. Any council members have any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at this point. Anyone care to address the 2014-15 budget? Okay, if hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Now move to council comments. Councilmember Sternquist.
I'm just happy that we're going to work through this and have no really reduction in service as we go forward. I'm comfortable.
Okay, council member, you.
Yeah, likewise, I just want to emphasize the fact that a few years ago, we worked on the fund reserve policy, and we studied that, and that's why we feel comfortable investing in our city. And even though the reserve, you can see from the chart, it keeps going down, but I think we have that situation well under our control. We're making strategic investment in our city.
Okay. Councilmember Viscara.
I think we have a good, we have a good budget. I think we're being prudent, and let's move ahead.
Mayor Protem.
No comments, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of general comments. Obviously, we're continuing with the leveraging that we've been doing over the last few years of trying to leverage what fundings we have by getting additional funding. Obviously, Ms. Jorgino talked about the state bond measure. These are the type of things that help us do the leveraging, so we need to pay attention, as we always have, to what else is out there that may help us. I think the long-term strategic plan and the long-term financial plan that we're looking at is key as we move forward. We've been looking at that. It sort of gives us a direction that we're going in, and as council member you said, knowing the reserves that we have and what opportunities we have going there. We continued, last year, we put a million dollars into basically the long-term commitment we have for employee benefits, and this is where a lot of the cities have gotten in trouble, where they've gotten way behind on being able to fund that. So we put a million dollars in last year. I believe we, just the interest on that, we got $100,000 rolling in the right direction for us. We didn't have quite that much to put in this time, but we are still putting money into there, which is reducing the long-term, basically, commitment that we have, and putting us in a much solider position. Looking at this, I'd say it's a very conservative budget. I think we've done well. I think staff has done well. I think, and as the city manager has said, looking at some of the things we've done in the past, it's time to adjust and say, okay, we've succeeded at some things, you know, let's move forward with any adjustments. Looking at the strategic plan, we know where we think we want to go with our investments, so I'm pleased with what we've got at this point. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, mayor. Before we do that, I need to make, I need to make a note for the public record of one change in the resolution adopting the budget in one member.
Okay.
So it's actually on page two of the resolution, and it is almost to the bottom. It's a line item that's total operating expenditures. And in the resolution, it indicates 16,277,166, I believe.
465.
466, thank, 466.
465.
Thank you. And that number needs to be changed to 16,301,875. All other numbers are accurate and correct. We just caught this in our triple-checking.
You mean thou, you said thousand, you mean million, 16.
A little different.
And so I just want to make sure that everything is on record as the correct adoptions.
Okay, could you give me that number again, 16?
301.
Okay.
875.
875.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if there are no other adjustments there, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, let me see if I'm at the right place. Adopt Resolution 14-4998, a resolution adopting the proposed fiscal year 2014-15 city budget and making the finding that the city is in compliance with Government Code Section 66,000.
And the change read into the record by the administrative services director.
That also.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item C is unanimously carried. With that, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, cool.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting. We moved item nine, which is unfinished business. There is none. New business, item A is a request for letter of support from the 710 Coalition regarding the completion of the State Route 710 Tunnel. Could I have the report, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city received a request from the 710 Coalition regarding the completion of the 710 Tunnel to connect the 10, 210, and 110 freeways, and to direct staff to send a letter on behalf of the city. The coalition is made up of a number of organizations, including several cities such as Alhambra, Monterey Park, Rosemead, San Gabriel, San Marino, Cudahy, and Downey, as well as some other organizations such as the Alhambra Chamber of Commerce, San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, Southern California Association of Governments, San Gabriel Unified School District, and Garvey School District. They're all in support of the project to connect these freeways through the tunnel concept. As you're aware, though, there is not a complete agreement by all local agencies in terms of that alternative, and there are a number of cities that have expressed concerns regarding the proposed tunnel extensions. Those include South Pasadena, La Cañada Pasadena, Sierra Madre, and Glendale. And some of those concerns regarding the impact of air quality the tunnel will have and the expected increase in traffic on the 210, providing access via the tunnel. So with that, we didn't give you an exhaustive staff report. I think we did provide you a link if you wish to research further into the matter. So we don't have a recommendation, but you have been requested by the coalition to send a letter in support of the tunnel project. That concludes my remarks. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from council members?
And what will they be doing with this letter? Taking it somewhere?
I just think it's just one more letter of support that goes through, into the record of agencies that might support it. I believe it's in the study phase now, and typically, letters such as this become a matter of the record in terms of the agencies that might either be in favor of it or against it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll open.
I have a comment. Or you want to wait till the end?
Yeah, let's wait, let's do the public comments, then we'll do our comments. Okay, anybody from the public care to comment on this?
No one from South Pasadena's here?
No.
Oh, Jim, I know you're not from South Pasadena.
No, not from South Pasadena. Jim Cliff, Temple City resident, former Alhambra resident, former El Surino resident. And as long as I've been around, that's been the most contested section of highway here in the state. It's only three miles long, and South Pasadena has managed to block it for all this time. This tunnel really isn't going to solve anything. If they do, it's a very expensive way to go, and in my opinion, it's just going to end up with more studies, which they've had tons of. They've had more proposed routes that South Pasadena's never been happy with, and unless it's completed above ground, I don't think it'll ever be completed. And the only good thing I can say about what we have before us tonight is the wording of the completion of the 710 freeway, because that does exist in Pasadena. There's a short stump right below the 210 and the 134. There's actually the 710. So a lot of times, they'll say the extension or the, you know, the, anything but completion of that section of roadway. And so, I don't know if it'll make any difference, but that's just my opinion on the whole thing. It's only three miles, but you've got a very strong group of people there in South Pasadena that have been against this for, since the inception. And I believe all of this was planned to have that freeway running there since 1949. This is before the 5 was in, before the 60, before the 210. All these routes were planned out, including State Highway 7, which is what the 710 is now. So anyway, that's my opinion on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anyone else care to speak? Okay, I'll close public comments. Council comments? Councilmember Viscara?
I noticed the San Gabriel Valley cog is in here, is having signed on to it, and I was there for that discussion. And believe me, it wasn't unanimous. There's, there was a lot of opposition, but it squeaked by, and there was a letter of support given. My personal opinion is that we don't have, we don't have a dog in this fight, and I don't think we need to jump in and support it. I think we, we should do a little bit of Switzerland here and just stay out of the issue, because we're, we're not affected. And I think we should let those folks solve their own problems.
Councilmember, you.
In a certain sense, I agree with councilmember Viscara, but I used to live in South Pass, and I work in Alhambra and travel up that way through the gridlock, and I can personally attest that not having that 710 extension impacts a lot of people in this state, in this age of sustainability, you know, having the gridlock, you know, people just piling up in Alhambra, the narrow corridor through South Pass itself and through Pasadena, I don't think that's a very sustainable thing to do. We're invested as a region, Southern California, in the infrastructure. In my opinion, we should, we should complete what we set out to do. So I think we should support it.
Okay. Councilmember Sternquist?
I'm on Fremont Boulevard going north, probably three times a week in South Pasadena, and it is a nightmare. It has been. And I think we need to, like you said, look regionally beyond just our own backyard, and I'm in full support of the letter.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Well, I'm in support that it eats something. Whether or not this tunnel is the answer, I have no idea, primarily because I really haven't paid that much attention to it, because it doesn't affect us. You know, I go through there every once in a while, I'm sure many people do, but, you know, it is their fight. They've been fighting in South Pasadena, La Cañada Pasadena, they've been fighting. And I don't know that this is going to end the fight, appears to me. But I just have a concern that it's, it's an all or nothing here. We have, I'm looking at this letter, and it's very specific in that we support this tunnel. It starts off by saying that we support the effort to complete the 710 and close the gap, but then it goes on to say that in order to do that, we have to do a tunnel. I don't even know that that's... have to do a tunnel. I don't even know that that's, I suppose that's the only, that's in their mind, the only option. So that, that's my only concern with that, is that I don't know that I can support something I don't know enough about.
Okay. Let me just say here, if, if this letter did not refer to the tunnel, but just, you know, referred to closing the gap, do you have problems with that?
I have no problem with that. I, I, I think that every, I think most people would like to see that happen. Again, whether the tunnel's the answer or not, I don't know.
Okay.
I think, I think that's the way they want the letter. I think that's, they've concluded it, at least this coalition, and at least according to the information we have, this coalition has decided that that's the only way to go.
Okay. I guess my-
How did the COG feel about it? Did they, what was, what was their hesitancy? Was it regarding just the completion, or was it the manner of completion, if you remember?
Well, it was both, and the, the potential disruption to, to so many residents. The, the tunnel was a big issue because of the impact that it has on, on everybody, businesses, homeowners. And South Pass is so small that they would be mightily affected.
Who?
South Pass. The residents of South Pass.
Even with tunnel?
Yeah.
As opposed to a service freeway?
Well, they'd, they'd still have to take out a lot of, a lot of prop, clear a lot of properties.
Even with a tunnel?
Even with the tunnel.
Okay, I, I guess my feelings on it, you know, I, looking as, I think Councilmember Sternquist says, looking at the regional perspective, that, you know, that's, that's a key, I think, to the San Gabriel Valley, you know, completing the, the infrastructure that's been planned for many years. And, you know, most of these things depend, one depends on the other, at least, they should, as you do your long-range planning. So I, I would support this. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we write a letter of support, but we'll support the completion of the seven-ten, but I would move that we remain silent on the tunnel issue in the, in the letter of support.
I can go along with that.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, with that, I see the heads nodding. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that item has been approved, as the motion has been made. We now move to item ten B, which is the first reading and introduction of ordinance number fourteen-nine-nine-three, amending Title VI, the Public Highway Sewer and Utilities, Chapter Two, Sewers and Waste, Article C, garbage and rubbish disposal, specifically Section six-point-two-C-two of the Temple City Municipal Code relating to the location, placement, timeframes, and construction of trash containers. Would that-
Long title.
Yeah, a long title. Could we have a staff report that may simplify this?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Bluman, council members. Before you tonight for your consideration is item ten B, which is a first reading and introduction of ordinance number fourteen-nine-thirty-nine-ninety-three relating to the location placement, timeframes, and construction of trash containers. As you're well aware, over the past few years, the city has enacted several amendments to the Temple City Municipal Code that collectively are aimed at maintaining and enhancing the city's quality of life. City has done that, staff has done that by meeting regularly with the city code, city code review standing committee to address deficiencies in the municipal code. Examples of those amendments have been the adoption of Title Ten with relating to the Los Angeles County Code and the Animals, Animals Code, public nuisance regulations, smoking regulations, and the tree preservation and protection ordinance. After analyzing issues related to the item before you and a thorough review and analysis, staff has determined that the current ordinance relating to trash cans is inadequate with respect to three separate items. One, with respect to quality of life, public safety, i.e. the blocking of sidewalks, and the effectiveness of the city's street sweeping program, and the National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System Best Practices, or MPDES. The current ordinance has not been amended since 1960, and therefore, this section is outdated, ambiguous, and contradicts existing city codes, policy, and contracts, and is no longer effective. In one, one example of this is there is a provision within the, the existing codes that indicates that all trash containers shall be constructed of metal material. Since this code was adopted in 1960 at the incorporation of the city, I think it goes without saying that most trash cans at that time were metal. This creates a code violation of, by all residents, since most residents don't have metal trash containers, they use plastic. It also conflicts with the agreement with Athens Services that allows residents to use any type of container, including trash bags. The current ordinance also allows residents to place their trash cans the day before trash pickup at twelve noon, and those trash cans can stay out till 12:00 PM the day after. Because the city has twice a week trash collection, this ostensibly allows trash cans to remain out on city streets for up to six days a week. This diminishes, diminishes the aesthetics of the community and leads to a decreased quality of life for residents. The current ordinance is ambiguous language regarding the placement of trash containers. It allows placement of containers in public places, and it leaves it at that. That means that anyone could ostensibly put their trash cans in any public place, including public rights-of-way, streets. It doesn't clearly define where it is that you can place your trash containers. This would conflict with new, the new street sweeping schedule and would minimize the effectiveness of MPDES best practices. An example of the current regulations with regards to how many days a trash container can stay out, using the example of a Monday and Thursday collection, as you can see, if you have Monday and Thursday trash collections, you can place your, for your Monday collection, you can place your trash can at 12:00 PM on Sunday, and you don't have to remove it until 12:00 PM on Tuesday, a total of 48 hours. For Thursday's collection, you can place your trash can out at 12:00 PM, at 12:00 noon on Wednesday, and you don't have to remove it until 12:00 PM on Friday, another 48 hours. This allows your trash cans to be out Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and as you, the days with the asterisk means that they're not full days. If you put that into context, trash cans can be out for a total of 96 hours of 168 hours or 50 percent, 57 percent of the time. The, the proposed ordinance before you will, will modify the code to, would modify the permitted times trash cans are allowed to be placed on the city's public right, public right-of-way for collection, define the appropriate, appropriate areas to place those trash containers, and improve the effectiveness of the city's street sweeping program, which includes MPDES best practices. With regards to timeframes, the proposed ordinance would modify the permitted timeframes trash containers are allowed to be placed on the city's public right-of-way for collection. The new timeframes would begin at 5:00 PM the day preceding collection and would need to be removed by 10:00 PM the day of collection. This would improve the aesthetics of the community by modifying the total amount of days trash containers are permitted to be out on the public right-of-way, and it would allow for greater effectiveness with regards to the city's sweet sweeping program. It would also, with regards to placement, it would also define the appropriate, appropriate areas to place and store those containers. It would define that the placement of containers for collection would be, have to be at the curb site in front of their property, with the exception of those abutting alleys. This would aid in public safety concerns that may arise from trash containers being placed in areas that would compromise the public's well-being, i.e. obstruction to pedestrian travel on sidewalks and in bike lanes. An example of the proposed regulations and how they, how the hours would set up, again, using Monday and Thursday trash collection. On a Monday collection, the placement of those containers would be able to be put out at 5:00 PM the day before Sunday, and they would have to be removed on Monday at 10:00 PM for a total of 29 hours. Thursday, you would be able to put them out on Wednesday at 5:00 PM and remove them on Thursday at 10:00 PM for another 29 hours. This would cut the day, the number of days that the trash cans would be out from six to four days, and it would allow for trash cans to be out for a total of 56, 58 hours or 34 percent of the time. If you look at the comparison on the PowerPoint behind you, a, the comparison with regards to the current and the proposed, on the current, again, six days, the proposed would allow them to be out four days. Again, this is using Monday and Thursday trash collection, 96 of 168 hours or 58 of 168 hours. The placement currently allows in public places anywhere, and the proposed placement would be at the curb site in front of a property, with the exception of alleys. Those would need to be placed, not in the alley, at the, at the property line. With regards to Rosemead Boulevard, Rosemead Boulevard is a bit, is a bit different, because there are already existing California Vehicle Code sections that address putting a trash can in a bike lane. And city staff, in cooperation with Athens Services, has done an extensive outreach to single-family and multifamily units on Rosemead, and I am happy to say that it has worked out wonderfully well. Residents, staff went out and handed, handed out flyers to each and every housing unit on Rosemead, which instructed residents exactly where it is that they need to put their trash cans, which is at the end of the bike, where the bike, where the bike lane ends, and no further in front than the end of the bow bout. That's worked very, very well. And with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay. Any questions from council members?
I have one.
Okay.
I know that Councilmember Viscara and I spent some time, of course, with Mr. Sagin and other staff to discuss this amendment to the ordinance, and, and I think that the recommendations reflect what the direction was. But, you know, something that came to my mind just now, as I was listening to your report, is this ordinance doesn't really address where cans can be stored when they're not ready to be picked up. Is there somewhere else in the code that addresses that?
Yes, Mayor Protem Chavez.
Because that's a problem also in our city, is that people just don't take them in. And, and maybe that's a byproduct of the fact that they legally can keep them out for, out there for four to seven days, so they figure, well, the other three days, I'll just leave them there, and I'll, I'll take my trash to them.
That, you're absolutely right, Mayor Protem Chavez, that is a byproduct, and that is addressed in the code in the public nuisance section, which indicates that no trash cans shall be visible from the public right-of-way. Staff does address that through phased and issuing code compliance notices, but you're absolutely correct, trash cans cannot be stored anywhere that are visible from the public right-of-way. But because residents are allowed to keep out their trash cans for six days, they don't really see a need in having to, if, with the current ordinance-
Yeah, it's easier for them to take the trash out and dump it where it is, rather than pulling the trash can in sometimes.
Yeah, and if you take the example that was before you, ostensibly, you could leave it out until Tuesday, and then put it out 18 hours later. Many times, they just leave them out.
Okay, so it is addressed somewhere else.
It sure is.
All right, thank you.
Have you had any blowback on this?
With, in what sense?
Well, I guess people aren't aware of it yet.
Well, it hasn't become law yet.
They are, they are not, pending your decision this evening, one slide in, that I did not get to, is staff, just with, like with anything else, we will make a concerted effort to reach out to residents and let them know of the new regulations, and that will be through flyer inserts in the Athens Bills website postings, Temple City Connect article, and community preservation warnings, and also the phased doors tags, which are not citations, they're not warnings. It's just a friendly reminder, letting you know that these are the new regulations, right?
Do, do we have a program in the city, or maybe it's something we can look at in the future? I don't, it hasn't really come up very often, but I, I think I've heard it mentioned a couple of times, from perhaps some of our, our elderly, elderly residents or ones who are suffering some disabilities, maybe have trouble taking their trash cans out. Do we have a system set up that they get help, or Athens will address that issue with them?
We, we do not have a policy or a program, but that, that has happened quite a few times, and I'm glad to say that in working with Athens, they, we forward the address. It's typically the same driver that drives the, the route and knows a lot of those residents by name, or just looking at them, and those drivers are kind enough to put the trash cans where it is that they're supposed to go. So although we don't have a policy, we do have a very good working relationship with Athens to assist residents as such.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from-
I have a question.
Councilmembers? Okay.
I was just wondering, Robert, if staff took into consideration streets such as mine that don't have sidewalks, because that, the, the residents who walk use where the trash cans would be as their sidewalk. So now they're further out into the street when they walk. So I know it talked about in the staff report that it could compromise public safety if the trash cans were in the sidewalk, but when you have no sidewalks, that area is where our residents are walking. So now they're further out into the street. And I tell you, on our cul-de-sac, people fly up north and south. So I'm wondering if maybe on streets such as mine, the actual, having it on the grass and not on the curb might make more sense, or make it more safe. I don't know, I'm just, you know, throwing that out there.
As, as, as Mayor-
Where are they supposed to be on streets like yours?
At the-
On our street, they're both.
At, at, at the-
No, with this-
At the curb side, in essence, where the street begins.
So on the actual street?
Correct.
Not on the lawn?
Not on the lawn.
Can they be on the lawn?
Of course they can.
So we can still-
Of course you can.
With this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Just a matter of policy. The, the major impetus for this was the fact that residents were, and a very, very, a very small portion of the residents, most residents follow the regulations and have a pride of ownership to take in their trash cans when they're supposed to. But we also have the streets where you turn the corner, and on any given day, there are trash cans, and they just don't move. And some residences, Mayor Protem Chavez has mentioned a few times, put signs on their trash cans saying, please don't park here. So this was meant to, to define where it is, not so much where they can put them, but to address the, to address the, the timeframes that they can be put out, and to, to further define where it is that residents can put them out when they have sidewalks and curbs. As you're well aware, in Temple City, there are quite a few streets that don't have a curb, and those will continue to be put out where it is that they're at. The drivers, the city's not going to, the city's not going to go out and actively cite anyone for keeping, keeping them on their grass.
But does the new ordinance say that it needs to be on the curb as a, just a general statement here? statement here? Where I...
No, the new ordinance indicates that it has to be at the curb side.
At the curb side.
At the curb side.
Okay, which doesn't necessarily mean in the street.
Exactly.
Okay, are there any other questions from councilors? Okay, with that, I will open for public comments. Is there anyone who cares to speak on this issue? Mr. Jambasian.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I guess, after being in back of Athens trucks several times going down a street picking up trash, I guess I didn't have an opinion until listening to it tonight, but I'd kind of like prefer that they be on the grass, because, I don't know if it's a retraining of Athens personnel or what, but they kind of go in the middle of the street and they block the traffic many times, because the streets in Temple City, some of them are very narrow, and when the trash can is out on the curb, that means that the truck has to go out that much further, and it gets to be kind of difficult, and they hold up traffic. And they're not being rude or anything like that, it's just that they have to do it that way. Number two is, I see that you're addressing the residential side, but between Loma and Sultana, on the south side in the business district, there is a business that puts his trash out on the sidewalk, and it's unsightly, and I'm wondering how that would be addressed.
By contacting our community preservation, so we can go out there and have a conversation with that business. Is it an actual business?
Yes, and it's every week.
And is it a three-yard bin, or is it individual trash cans?
Individual trash cans and sacks.
Then, community preservation would need to address that, it would need to be a three-yard bin.
Okay, so they shouldn't be doing that, especially in a commercial district, right?
That is correct. That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mary?
Mary Kokako, Temple City resident. I personally want to put my trash cans on the curb where the street is. My trash cans have wheels. I would have a hard time trying to get it on where my grass is. It's easier to come from my driveway to the curb to roll it. To me, it would be a hardship to put my trash cans on the grass. And as far as what he was talking about, the trash cans, the metal ones or whatever, I wouldn't want to, we used to have them, well, every time the trash man would come, they'd bang them on there, they bent. So the plastic is, I buy the heavier type, because the cheap ones, they still bang them, and you've got holes in them. So I pay more for my trash cans, and they stay a long time. And as far as, let's see, that and that, Athens, when they, sometimes they throw the cans in the street, and when we have the wind, they're in the middle of the street. So that is a problem that Athens has when they pick up our trash. It depends, it's not always, but lots of times, the trash cans are in the middle of the street. And as far as putting them out where my gardener comes, my trash pickup is on Wednesday. He comes around 10 o'clock in the morning. When he does my grass, or whatever he does, he puts my trash cans for the next day's delivery, which is good for me, because if he drags them in the back, and I have to haul them all the way in the front. So what you're talking about, the time to put them out, if you're going to go away, you're going to come back late, and I know ahead of time, I'll put my trash cans out earlier, because I'm not going to be back, I'm not going to put them out there at 11 or 12 when I get home at night. And as far as people leaving, I already know who does it in my block. Most of them take them in. Well, just tell those people, don't punish everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Anyone else care to speak on this issue? Okay. If not, I received a letter from a Judith Romaine concerning this. In her letter, part of it, she was concerned about us requiring residents to purchase expensive trash containers, which is not the case, so I think there's a misunderstanding there. She also expressed concerns about the weekly streets cleaning, saying that she's never seen a problem that would warrant that, and her bottom line is, she does not support the ordinance that's being proposed. So I will give this to the Madam Clerk for the record. Okay, with that, I'll close the public comments. Okay, council comments? Councilmember Yu?
I think it's a good ordinance, just, and I think staff would implement it wisely, depending on the, I think it's hard to write an ordinance that fits each and every street condition, but I trust that this will help to clean our streets.
Councilmember Sternquist?
I agree, and this ordinance hasn't been updated since 1960. That's quite a long time.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Viscar?
Obviously, I was involved in the ordinance, I support it, I think it's equitable, and it's the best of all worlds. But you know what, I'm still not clear. We can use the grass or the curb.
If you have no sidewalk.
If there's no sidewalk.
If you have no sidewalk.
If you have no sidewalk.
Okay, but if you have a sidewalk, then it's...
At the curb side.
Pardon me?
At the curb side.
No.
If you have a sidewalk...
Yeah.
It's at the curb.
You can't put it on the grass? In the parkway?
You can't put it on the sidewalk. You can put it on your grass, and Athens will probably pick it up, but as long as it doesn't impede the public right-of-way, i.e. it doesn't impede the sidewalk, people riding on the sidewalk.
Okay, you've got the property, then you've got the sidewalk, then you have the parkway, then you have the street.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a sidewalk.
You have a parkway?
Yes. So you can put it on the parkway?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
It's not impeding the public right-of-way, right? People can still walk on the sidewalk?
Yes, yes.
A wheelchair can still get down the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So I think the confusion is what curb side is. Is curb side, it's just at the curb?
Curbs, yes.
So it could be up on the grass, on the curb?
No, that implies the street.
On my street.
Oh, and yours?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's difficult to write one ordinance for...
Both.
Yes.
On my street, the cans wind up either on the street or on the grass, and we all have sidewalks. So is everybody okay doing it like that?
I would venture to say yes, sir.
Okay.
We have sidewalks.
Well, here's the problem that we have, and the frustration, I think, that staff in forming an ordinance like this, we have many different types of streets. We have those, we have, like in front of my house, that has a sidewalk and no grass between the sidewalk and the street, and then we have some like yours that have a sidewalk, then a grass area, then the curb. And then we have some like yours that have no sidewalk and just the curb, period. Okay, so I think the idea, and maybe we haven't expressed it well enough, is that what we're trying to avoid is for people to place their containers in a right-of-way that people are going to maybe either get injured, or be inconvenienced, or whatever. We don't want them in the sidewalk, you know, they're placed, as Mary said, it's easier for her just to wheel it out and put it on the street. She probably takes it down her driveway and places it right there in front of her curb, which is what many people do. I'll tell you, in my area, they're all over the place. They're never on the sidewalk, but they're either on the street against the curb, or they are on that grass area that separates the street and the sidewalk. And I think either one of those works.
As noted in the staff report, Mayor Protem, that's quantified exactly right. As long as it doesn't impede pedestrian flow on a public right-of-way, that's the aim.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, correct.
And that, combined with the fact that we'd like to get these trash cans off the street as much as we can.
In and off the street.
And that's more of a quality of life issue, I guess you could say.
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 14-993 for first reading by title only, amending title of six, Chapter Six, Article C, specifically Section 6.2C, Subsection Two of the Temple City Municipal Code. Wait for the reading of ordinance 14-993, and schedule the second reading of ordinance 14-993 for June 17, 2014.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's approved unanimously. I'd like to ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 14-993, an ordinance of City Council of Temple City, California, amending Section 6-2C-2 Garbage Containers and Location of Article C of Chapter Two of Title Six of the Temple City Municipal Code.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to item 10C, a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding prioritization of Parks and Open Space Master Plan, Action Plan Matrix. We have the staff report, please, our Parks and Rec Director, Kathy Burrows.
Good evening, council.
Good.
The, with the adoption of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan in April of this year by the city council, it provided a roadmap, so to speak, a blueprint of developing park and open space in the community, additional park and open space in the community, I should say. Within that master plan is an action plan matrix that identifies various steps and processes to complete some of the items that were in the master plan. The Parks and Recreation Commission was requested to review and prioritize the action plan to assist staff in budgeting and implementing the various components of the master plan. Real briefly, how we got to this point, the process began in February of 2013. The draft master plan was presented to the public in October, presented to the Planning and Parks and Recreation Commissions in November. As I mentioned, the council adopted the plan on April 2, and the Parks and Recreation Commission prioritized the components on May 21 of this year. I know this is very small to see, but just wanted to give a very brief overview. This is what the action plan matrix looks like. It has items that are due to be accomplished within zero to two years, three to seven years, and eight to 20 years, so it is a long-range plan for the community. These are the rankings that the Parks and Recreation Commission adopted at their meeting back in May. The first priority for the commission, and they combined several of the components, if you go back to the previous one, there were several different components that dealt with the washes, including number six, number seven, and then also some in three to seven years down the road. So they combined three of them to look at one project, to meet with the county, to discuss development of trails on the washes, develop use agreements and plans, and apply for grants. The justification is listed here, development of walking trails was the number-one request that amenity from the community, and the most likely opportunity for trails is along the washes. To date, we have met with Representatives of the county Parks and Recreation Department. They are developing concepts for trail development based on the county's template, so to speak, of trails, and they will be setting up a meeting within the next month with County Flood Control. So we have made some inroads in this area. As was mentioned by Parks and Recreation Chairman Donna Giorgino, there are some grant possibilities that have come up within the last several weeks. In addition to the state park bond that she mentioned, SB 1086, we received notification last week that Supervisor Antonovich is making, I believe, $5 million available to the cities on a competitive basis for additional park and open space development. Each city is eligible for up to $300,000. The only drawback, so to speak, is applications are due September 3, which is not a long ways away. So the development of the, or the approval of the master plan and the prioritization by the commission will certainly help in submitting projects for the grant funding. The second...
Kathy, so are we going to make that deadline?
We will make it.
Okay.
We've always made deadlines for grant funding.
We will make it. We don't know yet what we're going to be applying for, but we will have an application submitted. The second item that the commission identified was the preparation of master plans, specific plans for both Live Oak and Temple City Park. And the reason for this one, there are several other components within the matrix that reference improvements to the parks, including new shade shelters, new playgrounds, and so developing master plans for each facility will ensure all improvements are coordinated and prioritized. The other reason was indicated in the staff report, not on the slide here, is the, as part of the survey of the master plan, the community was asked, if you had $100, what would you spend it on in regards to park and open space areas? And the vast majority of residents indicated they would rather see improvements to the existing parks than spending the money on new parks. Our goal is to do both, but we want to make sure we're making the best use of our existing parks as well. To that end, we have included $35,000 in the recently adopted 2014-15 budget for this purpose. The third item that the commission prioritized was to change the park rules to allow unleashed dog walking and doggy waste stations. The justification for this one is it's a simple thing to do, but it was also a very high priority for our community. So we have, the commission has already had a discussion at their last meeting on this item. They have requested staff to return with a proposed ordinance. We have completed a survey of surrounding cities regarding this, what ordinances they have in effect, and the vast majority, almost exclusively, do allow dogs in their parks. So we will be returning with an amendment to the, or an ordinance to amend the municipal code to the commission within the next couple of months. I should also mention...
I'm sorry, will that affect, obviously, that's for Live Oak Park, but is that also going to be for Temple City Park?
We have not decided that yet, and at the staff level, we're still going back and forth. I don't know what we will recommend yet to the commission, but the commission will have to determine a recommendation of whether it's for one or both parks, and ultimately the city council.
I think you have to take each separately, because you have different issues going on with different parks.
Absolutely.
Because you have the summer concerts and everything else.
Absolutely, and the latest discussion we had today at the staff level was to not allow at Temple City Park. And one of the reasons why I say that is, the ordinance that we are going to be presenting to the commission would allow parks, would allow dogs in parks, but not in certain areas. For instance, they would not be allowed in playgrounds, on tennis courts, in buildings, and so when you start looking at Temple City Park, most of the areas that staff and the commission recommended dogs not be allowed were almost the entire park. So we will come back with additional information on that. I should also mention that we do have a survey on the city's website. We decided to do a very quick survey of our community, and so if there's any community members that want to take a survey to give us their input, whether they do or do not want to allow dogs in the park and with what restrictions, that is available until Thursday of this week. So we are making inroads on that as well. The fourth one was to continue implementation of the bicycle master plan, although this is not under the purview of the Parks and Recreation Department. Biking and walking trails, as I mentioned before, were ranked number one by the community. The city is moving forward with implementation of the bicycle master plan, and at your May 6 council meeting, you did approve the plans and specs for additional 12.6 miles of bike lanes, authorizing staff to solicit bids, so that is moving forward as well. Commission believes that prioritizing this item high would assist in ensuring that it is further implemented down the road. The fifth is to meet with the school district, Temple City Unified School District, to develop joint use agreements for use of open space on campuses, and to discuss and schedule proposed school improvements. One of the other high-ranking items was an outdoor pool, ranked number three, with a limited space available on city property and the high school, or the school district planning to improve its pool at the high school, it makes sense to work with the district on this joint project. Also allowing public access to school sites after school hours may be one way to increase park acreage without having to purchase property. We have been working ongoing with the school district in regards to joint projects. At the last standing committee meeting, Mayor Bloom did request that a working committee be established to work further on this project. I have been in contact with the superintendent. I don't know where, they are on that side, but we do, I did provide recommendations from our end.
So Kathy, is that, so as you know, we have the standing committee that meets regularly with the school districts. Is this going to be in conjunction with that, or is this going to be separate and apart? Or we haven't gotten to that point?
I believe the, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I believe the... I believe the, and I don't want to speak for the mayor, but I believe the, the recommendation of the, the idea behind a working committee was to have different players, maybe more at the staff level, work and then maybe present recommendations to the standing committee.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that, and I, I was there and we discussed it, and obviously getting more people involved and maybe having a more hands-on approach than just the standing committee members once a month even, so.
Right.
So we're working towards getting that moving then.
We are, but I have not received any further word.
And, and maybe we can discuss that at the next standing committee meeting-
Yes.
-as to what type of members, maybe you have some, some of the commissioners on there maybe, and people from the public, things like that.
Absolutely.
Good.
I should also mention, I did have a meeting with the superintendent with the Almani City School District, and did mention to her briefly that we do have a park and open space master plan, and if there were any possibilities of any of their school facilities that are located in or close to Temple City, that we would certainly be willing to look at that as well and welcome those opportunities. So we did put the word out, even though it's not listed specifically, we do have, other than Temple City Unified School District, that we do work with.
Okay, you want to just hit the, the remaining four then, the remaining four items?
I, real briefly, the next one was to install Wi-Fi at Live Oak Park, we're working on that. Research the availability of the commercial property at 5336 Rosemead Boulevard. This one ties into the, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Which is that? I was trying to figure out where that is. 5336 Rosemead Boulevard?
It's a little, it's a little-
Is that that little, uh?
It's the doggy wash, it's crossed from the-
Right, okay, yeah, right, right near our billboard then.
Correct. The only reason-
South of that.
Yeah.
Or billboard.
The only reason this would be pursued, if we developed the washes, it would make a great trailhead, right at the beginning of that section of the, the, the trail. If the trails are not completed, then there really probably isn't a whole lot of reason to purchase that property.
Oh, okay, I see.
And then finally incorporate parklets into the Los Tunas Improvement Project Plans. And again, this is not one that the Parks and Recreation staff have any control over, but again, prioritizing higher, we hope, will lead to the likelihood of inclusion in the project. The final one, and this was not recommended as a higher priority by staff, but the commission felt it was a high priority, was to meet with the private schools and churches to discuss possible use of property for park and open space development. Even though there aren't a lot of private facilities that have sufficient land, there are some, and so we will follow up with those facilities within the next year.
And you know, just also that would be another potential issue to address. As you know, we, Mayor Bloom and I have been working on this ministerial council for quite a long time. It comes and goes, and, and we've got some people now that are very interested in getting it going again, and that might be a-
Absolutely.
...top topic to discuss at a future meeting, since obviously those are the ones who control these private spaces.
Absolutely. That would, that would be-
Maybe we can have somebody from Parks and Rec come to that meeting as well.
I would be glad to do that.
Okay.
The other ones are lower priorities, and I don't necessarily need to go over these. The water companies, as I mentioned previously in a city manager's report, we have already contacted the water companies, and they have, both Sunny Slope and Calam, California American, have indicated that because these are active well sites, that public access is not allowed. And so developing them for any type of public use is not allowed at this time. However, we did ask that, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, if they become inactive, to please keep us in mind, and we would look at them at that point. There is a large parcel, Edison Parcel right of way, east, west, I'm sorry, west of the city. This is not a high priority, based on staff and commission's recommendation, for a couple reasons. It's outside the city limits by several blocks. It's currently developed with a nursery, and it would be extremely costly to develop due to the size. It's about, close to 20 acres, and to develop 20 acres that has nothing right now would cost you millions and millions and millions of dollars. And so that is one that we did not list as a high priority at this time. There's a small property at the corner of Live Oak and McCullough. Again, this is not a high priority at this point. It is very close to Live Oak Park, and we felt efforts should be focused more so in other areas of the city. Again, there's a small property that's located just outside the city boundary, on Rosemead Boulevard, at the north end of Rosemead Boulevard this time. So the, the item was to discuss with LA County possible incorporation. Staff's recommendation, if and when this is considered, it does not need to be incorporated or annexed into the city. We see this more as a joint project with the county, if we ever want to purchase and develop that property.
Is that a vacant lot at Emperor?
It is. It, my understanding from the county, it's been a code enforcement case for years with them, so they would love to see something there. It's just a-
All it's used for is election signs.
They should come down after today, yeah.
And the final one is to check on the possible closure of the post office. We have not yet been able to get any information on the closure. We don't believe it's likely to close in the near future, but we will continue to work on this. It's just not listed as a higher priority at this time. Finally, at the commission meeting, there was some ongoing review, and obviously we, we want to continue to keep on top of the master plan and not just prioritize and let it go. Therefore, staff will provide quarterly reports to the Parks and Recreation Commission on projects, progress to date. We will also review the matrix with the Parks and Recreation Commission annually to add, delete, reprioritize, move things around as needed. It is a living document, and we want to make sure it stays that way. And then we will also present a recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding the matrix for programs. The one that we have gone over tonight is only for the facilities and amenities. There's a second matrix for programs and marketing. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. We do have several members of the Parks and Recreation Commission here. If there are any questions of them, we'd be glad to try and answer them.
Any questions from the council?
No questions.
Okay, if not, I'll open it for public comments. Okay, I will close it for public comments. Council, comments. Commissioner Yu, or Councilman Yu.
That's all right.
I'm looking at three, I'm, I'm looking at three commissioners out there.
There used to be a commissioner.
Yeah, it used to be, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Once a commissioner, always-
I think it's great recommendations. I comment, I would like to comment the Park and Rec Commission and staff of good work. I think, I, I totally agree with the recommendation of the reprioritizing, so I think we should implement it.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Just happy to see us moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman Viscara?
Yeah, no, I'm glad if I had to see this too, and I'd really like to see the, the momentum ramped up a little bit if there was a way. Is there any low-hanging fruit, any stuff that we could, even though it may not be the first priority, that, that, that we could jump off into?
Well, there are several projects that we are currently working on, and that we believe will be accomplished within the next couple of months. It's not adding any additional space necessarily, but we talked about the code amendment to allow dogs in the park is one. Wi-Fi we're working on, to allow dogs in the park. And then Wi-Fi in the parks, we're also working on, hoping to get at least some hotspots, so to speak, at Live Oak Park.
Is that pricey, is that?
Depends on how we do it. It could be very pricey if you want to have access throughout the entire park. Our recommendation is going to be to have certain areas and identify those areas, maybe the picnic shelter, the bleachers, things like that, only specific areas, and then it's a lot less expensive.
Currently, within the community center-
There is some already in the community center, there is access, as well as the annex.
Is the, and I think we talked about it, but I don't remember, the hiking trail concept along the wash?
Yes.
That's pricey, right?
Um, not necessarily. It, it depends on how extensive you want to develop the trails. The county's basic plan is probably not terribly expensive. Well, let me back up. It depends on how much we're doing as well. Our recommendation is to start at the southern end of the city, between Rosemead Boulevard and the city yard, the, the southern border, as the first area, and that's where the, the county staff have been developing concept plans, and the next step is to meet with County Flood Control to get their buy-in. We're hoping to get that accomplished within the next month, because we believe that's a great opportunity for, to, to, for, for funding, for competitive funding, for either Antonovich's grant, or if the, the November Park Bond passes, for, for a competitive grant for that as well. So we are moving forward on that. The other thing with the, the specific master plans for the parks, one of the recommendations could be to install a trail at Live Oak Park, similar to that at Rosemead Park, that winds around the entire park. It could be either a, a rubberized surface or some other type of surface that would also accomplish the same thing as trails, not, not as natural and, you know, out in the community as the, the washes, but it does provide additional walking trails in the community.
That one in Rosemead gets a lot of traffic.
Yes, it does.
It's used a lot.
Do they allow dogs on that?
Yes, they do.
They do. Because that's a rubberized track.
Yes, yes.
Have you even ridden my bike?
That was probably not allowed. What he really meant to ask was, when's the fountain going in? I don't know.
That would be considered as part of the specific plan.
Although that isn't the number one item, or number two.
Number two.
Um, just a couple of comments, I'm sorry, what were you doing?
No, I'm done.
On the number one item, and I know the walking trails, and, and I think that's a great idea, whatever happened to that plan that they were going to have, county and city, all, everybody was getting together, and they were, it was going to go from La Cañada all the way down to the, I don't know where.
I'm not sure-
Is that completely dead now?
Uh, you know what, I don't know if it's completely dead. When I met with the county staff, one of our hopes is that if, if somebody starts trails, then hopefully it will carry on, just like with the Rosemead Boulevard improvements. You know, it goes all the way, the, the wash goes all the way throughout, from the, the foothills to the, to the ocean, pretty much. And we're hoping that once we start developing trails along Temple City's park, that the momentum will carry. There are some areas further north, much further north in the foothills, that have been developed, but, you know, we would really like to, you know, get something started and see how the momentum goes. The county-
And the reason I asked that was, yeah, get the momentum in our city, but should we begin dialogue with other cities to the north or south of us, and would that help get this thing moving faster or better?
We have with the county, who is directly north of us. It's an incorporated county area directly to the north, and they are working on developing some of their areas as well.
And does it go into Rosemead? Does it?
It does go south to Rosemead. We have not had any discussions with them yet.
And I think Almani has already developed some walkways along the wash.
Almani has along the Arcadia Wash, and, and actually, when we met with the county staff, they were much more excited about the Arcadia Wash, because they saw that as being a connector between what Almani has done to the south, and what I believe the county, or it could be Arcadia, has done to the north, along the Peck Road, spreading basement and, basin, and down to the south. Unfortunately, our section of the Arcadia Wash is a little bit far removed from what they're hoping for, but they still see that could be a possible connector between the two.
Well, I, I would just like to thank staff, and of course, our, our Parks and Rec Commissioners, as Kathy mentioned, three of them are here this evening, and I wish we had stuff to work on this when I was on Parks and Rec. This is, don't you, you get tired after a while of just, you know, granting permits to use a field here and there. I, I think, I, I think they did a great job. They put a lot of thought and effort into this, and, and I commend our commission for doing this. This is, to me, what we envisioned our commission and commissioners to do, and that is to do the, the heavy lifting and, and to give it good thought processes and, and, and come up with great recommendations. And so, thank you for doing that, and, and it looks like a good plan, at least a very good start-off point, and, and I like the fact that we're going to get updates and, and keep it moving, keep that momentum going, because too often, I think as Mayor Bloom has said, we create plans and then they get dusty on a shelf somewhere, and we hope that this will not do that, and it appears that we're headed in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, I, I too want to thank the, the commissioners, Chairman Giorgino, Nan Fish, who's here, and Joanne Rosso, and, and your counterparts, and I'll reiterate what Mayor Protem says. As we, our vision is to get a strategic plan, a long-range plan, to get these pieces put together, to help get the commissions to help put them together, to drive them. I'm, I'm very pleased to see that this is happening. It's happening here, our, our public art program is moving in that direction. So I'm really excited, and, you know, as we talked about, that, you know, what we want to finish up this year is getting that, that longer-range strategic plan, financial plan in place, so we have a game plan to move forward. So I thank the commission very much. You've done a, a great job in, in setting the example of, of how we want to do this and move forward, so thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I, before we talk about motions, just want to make a couple of comments I forgot to make. You know, especially on the development of Trail in Eden and Arcadia Wash area, I remember when we have had that Eden Wash study. I mean, I personally am a great supporter of, of trails and, and washes. I think flood control and, and, and trail and open space can, can be together. However, I also remember that there have been some concerns with residents living in the area of security and all that. I, I believe all those can be addressed, but, so I just want to make sure that people who are listening to us, and viewing us on the TV, I mean, those are all detailed questions that need to be worked out, parking, lighting, access, security, patrolling, you know, all those things can be addressed. This is just a first step in working towards it, and particularly, we're the one of the first cities that work with the county, that potentially some, you know, funding and support from the county for something like that, so. So, that's my comment.
Okay. You, you want to bring a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we approve the party list as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item 10C has been unanimously approved. We will now go to item, thank you, commissioners. We'll now go to item 11, Communications, there is none. Item 12, update from city manager.
Mr. Mayor, my, with the council, I'll keep this brief. The latest issue of Temple City Connect will be mailed to residents this weekend. The summer edition includes discussion of the local drought situation, as well as summer activities and recreation programs in and around Temple City. It'll also be available at city facilities and online at www.templicity.us. Registration for summer recreation programs has begun. Registration for Summer Stars Club, Teen Zone, Camp Zone, and Campapalooza is currently being accepted at Live Oak Park, and registration for summer fee and charge classes begins Thursday, June 12th, and one can register online or in person at Live Oak Park Community Center. We have an upcoming neighborhood watch meeting for Area 6 to be held on Thursday, June 12th. The meeting begins at 5:30 PM at Live Oak Park for, which is the area, for Area 6 bounded by Baldwin Avenue, Live Oak Avenue, Almani Avenue, and Olive Street. Free dinner and childcare, and finally, there's a Father's Day Game Night. Celebrate Father's Day with pizza, wings, and games at 6:30 PM on Friday, June 13th at Live Oak Park Annex. Pre-registration is required by June 10th, and the fee is $5 per person. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Anyone have any to report?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. The ad hoc, audit, ad hoc committee met last week. The audit, ad hoc committee consists of three members, Mayor Protem Chavez, and Planning Commissioner Stephen Curran, who is our CPA, and myself. We met and discussed last week on the possibility of the audit, forming an audit committee. We looked at the charter for the formation of this audit committee. We met with Administrative Services Director Tracy House, and the charter was initially drafted by Commissioner Curran, and we reviewed it, and Administrative Services Director had made a lot of suggestions and improvements. So right now, we, she's going to rewrite, address some of the new sections according to the discussion, and we're planning to bring back to the city council for discussion in July, perhaps, and for the council to consider the formation of a standing audit committee, which, which will work with the, with staff, with management, as well as our outside auditor. And at this time, I would like to suggest to the mayor that we request any residents having interest, if they have a CPA, law, audit background, that might be interested in- in volunteering for the upcoming appointment of this committee. Should, should the council decide to, to establish such a committee.
Okay, so anyone interested, contact the city clerk's office and submit their name.
Right.
Okay. Okay, any others?
I don't have a report, but I just have a question for our city attorney. Do we still need the city attorney legal services ad hoc committee? Because I know you've worked with staff. Are we going to meet on that again?
Councilmember, that's entirely up to you. The primary purpose was to help look at the budget. We met initially-
We met initially, and I know you've been working with-
I met with the Administrative Services Director and your, your city manager, and you've approved the budget.
Right.
So if there are other issues-
I don't think there are. I think, and if there are, we can always perhaps redo that one. But my recommendation would be this time to go ahead and dissolve that.
Can I just say, I can't recall right now. I don't have my notes in front of me. But we were, you had suggested, Eric, that we meet again in May, but I don't recall what it was for. We were going to get together one more time to go over-
And I think what happened was that got superseded by discussions through the budget process, and so it was never required.
That's my understanding, too, that we made a lot of progress and just incorporated into the budget. As issues come up, you can reform this.
Unless you want to. It's up to you.
No, I just, I can't recall exactly what the purpose was for us to meet again in May, but we were going to meet, I think it possibly, it was to go over some plans that other cities used, that we didn't go into depth. You had told us about other types of-
May I interject a couple of comments?
Sure.
I think it was a discussion at the meeting that I attended, that the current way we titled the work is probably not correct, because we identify retainer work and then non-retainer work. It's all billed at the same hourly rate. There's no fixed retainers, I recall. So we talked just internally about restructuring the billing, but that wouldn't affect, that's more of an internal accounting kind of a practice, if I recall that discussion.
Correct. We had a, we have something designated as a retainer, and then we have a, a basic services, and then we have specialty services. There is a difference in rate between the retainer and basic services, as opposed to the special services. But I had recommend that we just kind of collapse the retainer and basic services into one pot and manage it as a, as a lump sum through the budget process.
So I guess my only other question is, will we still receive the quarterly reports from you then as to how we're expending monies?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
So then, that's fine.
And Mayor, Council, while I'm looking at this, I do note that since you've adopted your budget earlier today, you can probably get rid of your 1415 budget ad hoc.
Yeah. Before I do that, I believe the, the commission application review ad hoc committee has met. Yeah, you want to report?
Do you want to do it?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Viscara and I met, and we met with the three applicants that applied. And our recommendation was to reappoint all of our current commissioners. And the three, they were all gentlemen-
Who had reapplied.
Who had reapplied, yes. And the, and all of them had. The three gentlemen that applied, we did share with them that all of the previous commissioners or the current commissioners had applied. So we wanted to let them know that if they weren't selected, that there were some other things that we'd like them to be involved with. One was CERT, definitely the Citizens Academy, and also the Sheriff's Community Academy that's coming up. And all three of them were very appreciative of the information and the opportunities to just volunteer in any capacity. So our recommendation would be to reappoint the commissioners that are currently on and reapplied.
Every, every time we go through that process, I'm amazed at the people that you don't know are there. They just pop up. I mean, they're there, but we don't know they're there. And, and they pop up and you say, I'll be darned. You know, they're some really sharp, smart people, and they're interested in what's happening with their city, and, and they want to get involved. And I think it's incumbent upon us to encourage them to stay involved and give them opportunities to participate.
And I believe, Peggy, you would, you had, were going to contact them and let them know of these other opportunities and the dates, so that they had that information.
And what will you appoint?
I'm assuming our next meeting, we will need to have an item on to appoint the commissioners.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with that, I believe we can dissolve three of the ad hocks. I believe the 2014-15 budget ad hoc can be dissolved. I believe the commission application review ad hoc committee can be dissolved, and the city attorney legal services ad hoc committee can be dissolved. And I so moved that those three be dissolved.
Are we still, is the Rosemead Boulevard improvement project standing committee, is that still active?
Yeah, the, the project's not wrapped up completely yet, so we need to keep it alive a little bit. Okay.
I'm sorry, question. I'm having a senior moment. The, the Parks and Open Space Committee that Councilmember Sternquist and I were on, when did that go away? Or did it go away?
It's not on the list.
Yeah, it's not on the list.
I know it's not on the list, that's why I'm asking.
That, that ad hoc committee was specifically to assist in developing the RFP for the master plan. So once that was done, there technically wasn't an ad hoc committee, and that was dissolved. The two committee members, former committee members, did participate in some of the meetings, but the, the formal ad hoc committee was to assist in developing the, the RFP for the master plan.
Do you have any need for-
No.
For that kind of assistance? I guess I'm saying I'd like to still be involved in some way. I don't know if that's possible.
Apply for the commission in 10 months.
That was a cruel blow. Okay, well, that's out there.
Okay, let's go to item 14 on the agenda. Council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, I just wanted, I think Mark has left, but thank Mr. Olson for coming out today and giving us the information about the citrus little critter that's affecting the citrus trees. And I just wanted, one of the reasons I had him come out is that the mosquito and vector control, we've talked about this briefly, but the monies that the, the vector control gets from our taxes is only to use in regards with vectors that affect human beings. So not until this would develop into something that could cause humans to get ill, would the mosquito and vector control actually take a closer look at it. So we're aware of it as our governing board, but there's nothing that we do to be proactive with it. And that's why I thought it was important for him to come out and at least make our residents aware. Just a, a brief note on Foothill Transit. Foothill Transit on their website has a link where you can go in, if you have a smartphone and you receive emails. And if you're at a bus stop and you can, you're waiting for a bus and it's five, 10, 15 minutes late, you can actually go on to the Foothill link by the line that you're taking, and they will give you up-to-date information minute by minute as to how long it will be before that bus comes. So they are really working on customer service and improving communication. Because when people complain, it's usually because the bus was late. And when the bus driver says, well, I'm sorry, I was stuck in traffic, they seem to, people seem to be reasonable about that. But if they can get the information right away, they know that they are going to be late, and it seems to be a lot better for the bus riders. And at our recent governing board meeting, I am happy to say I was selected to be the delegate to the executive board, not the delegate, the alternate to the delegate. And so what does the alternate do? Everything that the delegate does, except you get no stipend for it. So you get to go to all the different meetings and all the different conferences that are local. But it's really an interest of mine, and Foothill Transit is really looking regionally to help link bus transportation with bike riders. And they're very excited about Temple City's bike paths and are moving forward with that. So it's really a great opportunity, and I love transportation. So I hope in a couple of years I can be, be a delegate and actually be a voting member of that group.
Is Roger Chandler back?
Roger was not, he is back as a governing board member. He put his name in the hat, but he wasn't selected. So, anyway, I'm very happy to have been selected.
Good, congratulations.
And represent our city. So thank you.
Thank you for doing that for us. You have any other items?
And that's it.
Okay, Councilmember Viscara?
Yeah, what the heck were they, should have written them down. One of them was, I'd, I'd like to thank Don. We had a significant issue in the city yesterday where there was a police chase and a fatality involved. And I believe you directed Tracy to call each of us and, and report on that. So, thank you.
They did a good job in responding, trying to get out there and help out and get information out, so.
And, and, and those are the kinds of issues that we get all kinds of questions about all the time. So the sooner we hear about them, the better. We don't always get that from the sheriffs. So, thank you, Tracy. Another thing is, I won't be here for the next meeting. I'll, I'm, I'll be on vacation. And so I'll see you in the meeting after that.
Next fiscal year.
Indeed.
Okay. Okay, Council-
I'll see him on the 27th.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on that in just a minute. Okay, Councilmember, you?
I, you know, on the issue of transportation and bikeway, I mean, we all know that we, the Rosemead Boulevard just reopened, and we're all very happy about that. I'm also happy to report that we've been getting some inquiries from, actually, Santa Monica. So, I mean, Santa Monica tends to be a city that we all think is pretty progressive and out there. They're actually turning to this little city in San Gabriel Valley, asking for information how to do protected bikeways. So, and through the conversation with them, I discovered that actually we're being featured on a local block called Streets Block LA. We all can kind of look it up. There are actually quite a few articles about us in the street block, talking about, actually, I'll just read one of the, one of the headings. It says, "Sweet New Protective Bikeway on Beautiful Rosemead Boulevard." So, so something that we set out to do a few years ago. We actually want to be a leader. I think in some ways, we have succeeded.
Are you sure we want to be discovered?
So.
Okay, any other items?
No, but that's it.
Okay, Mayor Protam?
Perhaps you should send those links to Ms. Hilton. Yeah. I really didn't have anything until Fernando brought up the fact about the notice yesterday regarding the police incident. You know, we used to get pretty quick updates from the sheriff department regarding police incidents in the city. But we don't get those anymore.
We got it today.
We got one today?
Yes, from the sheriffs regarding the incident.
No, that, are you talking about the, the rest of the softball coach?
Yes.
Okay, but that's, that's not, that's not what I was talking about. Those go to everybody who's part of that notice thing that we're on with Arcadia and everybody else. That's something different. But that stopped, and I don't know, maybe it's another budget thing, maybe they don't have the manpower to do that. But as Fernando mentioned, it becomes significant because when things happen in the city, the first, most of the people around us ask us, and we don't know. And, you know, it's a little discouraging sometimes. I'll give you an example. I think it was Saturday night, I heard, it was probably around midnight, which sounded like gunshots. Could have been fire, firecrackers, but they sounded like gunshots. And then shortly thereafter, there was a helicopter flying around over my house for about 15, 20 minutes. Never heard a word about what it was or what happened. And people were asking me today, neighbors, hey, what was with the helicopter flying over at midnight? So, I don't know, I just, again, I, I understand that maybe they don't have the manpower to provide that information to us, but we used to get it pretty regularly, and, you know, I kind of miss it.
There was an incident last week, or week before last, where there were four or five police cars kind of in a circle over by Ralph's. And one of the residents called me and said, what's going on? You know, the whole streets lit up and all this is happening. So I called Sergeant Miranda, and apparently, he wasn't in the loop. He was in the station, but he didn't even know that was happening.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some distance.
And I'm not criticizing him, but there's some kind of a communication thing that does not occur, I think, within the sheriffs on, on incidents like that.
Well, and again, we can probably address that at a sheriff meeting. I don't want to pick up a lot of time with that here, but just to, I just mentioned it because I know you, other than that, I don't have any.
Robert, maybe that can be an item for the agenda of the next monthly meeting we have with the sheriff.
Certainly, so we'll, we'll make sure to agendize it.
Okay, I have three quick items. The, the Olson Project down on Lower Zusa Road, we had a groundbreaking on May 28th. There were four of us down there, and they're getting ready to start building model homes, and they hope to have some available, I think it's by August or September.
September were the model homes.
The model homes.
And they estimate that move in by December.
Oh, boy. Actually, my son's interested.
So anyhow, that's going on. Second thing, talking about Rosemead Boulevard article in the paper where the city of LA, Mayor Garcetti paves the way for great streets. And he's talking about, we'll make your streets accessible to pedestrians, wheelchairs, strollers, and bicycles, not just cars. We'll create an environment where new neighborhood businesses can flourish. We'll pave the streets and make them green streets. That was rather interesting. The last thing I have is, you know, we've recruiting for a new city manager. The application deadline has passed, and I understand there were 35 applicants. Our recruiter is still sorting through that to see how, how many real viable candidates we have. We are scheduled to meet on the 27th of this month with the recruiter to go through those applicants and to select the people that we will do the first round of interviews on. And those are scheduled for July 12th, and we'll have to see how it goes from there. So that's just an update on where we are in that, that recruitment. So with that, we move to item 15 on the agenda, reimbursement of expenses to city officials for conduct of city business and for city payment of conference expenditures. There is none. We now recess to the successor agency, the Temple City Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. I will call that meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Agency member Sternquist?
Present.
Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman Bloom?
Here. Okay, item three is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the consent calendar has been approved. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, I think Tracy, you may want to just mention something that I think we got email about, but I think it's worth-
Sure.
Talking about here.
It says none on my agenda.
I know it does. It changed.
Got changed?
We added it today.
Okay.
Nothing is so constant as change.
It could be public comments if we want, but.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I, I did send an email late this afternoon regarding the issue with the one parcel or piece of property that we thought that the redevelopment agency owned. And as you recall, with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, the successor agency sort of assumes that, those assets and, and deals with it. And then there's the separate oversight board that watches everything that, that the successor agency is doing. And part of that process, we basically needed to outline all the land or parcels that the redevelopment agency, former agency owned. And we had one small parcel in the parking lot of the Kmart Shopping Center. And by all, you know, all of our records indicated that we owned it, owned that parcel. So I was going through the motions with this Department of Finance for this one piece of parcel, with this one piece of property, which those motions are not, not straightforward. It's, it's a lot of red tape, you might say. So- So actually, a gentleman approached me representing, and a gentleman up north who had, was under, had the understanding that he owned the property, and they had some documentation, and so I managed to dig through the old files that Peggy had, and did find an original quit claim deed that was never executed for this parcel, this piece of property, this parcel.
You mean it was never signed or never recorded?
It was never executed by the city.
When you say executed, that means what?
Basically signed by the city, and then-
There was an unsigned quit claim deed?
There's an unsigned quit claim deed.
So that, what is that? That's nothing.
Unless there's some action that the council reassigned that.
So we still own it, that means?
But there's, there's, there's plenty of documentation as to, because what happened is, back at that time, the files supported there, many, that the city owned many of those parcels, and they chose to go ahead and sell them to the respective property owners of that center. And this particular parcel owner actually, or parcel was, was intended, tended to be sold to Mr. Miller of Miller's Outpost. Can't remember his first name, I think it was David. And-
Is that the Miller's Outpost thing?
Yes. And so-
Is this the area between Burger King and the Hat?
Well, it's more like, yeah, it's more like, it's kind of more by the Denny's. Sort of by the Denny's there.
Oh, by the Denny's. Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so, so it appeared that, you know, there was all these transactions dealing with all these parcels that were deeded over to owners within the shopping center complex. So I actually, Martin Cole was actually city manager at that time, and I did reach out and contact him and said, "Do you recall this? You know, it's really strange that these, you know, this deed, just this one quit claim deed is left." And he doesn't recall it specifically, but he recalls that it was the intent, his recollection is it was certainly the intent of the redevelopment agency to sell all those parcels to the, to the property owners. And so we've kind of come to the conclusion that, that most likely was the intent. There is documentation that for the compensation for that parcel dealt with credits back through the, through the maintenance assessment agreement or arrangement that they still have at that civic center. And so we've all pretty much concluded that, and feel that that's the intent. There's proof of compensation for that particular parcel. The owner is, or the gentleman that thinks he's the owner is very interested in getting this resolved, because he is subsequently trying to turn over and sell that parcel among a group of other parcels within that area. So on the advice of Greg Murphy, our Assistant City Attorney, I've had to unravel this whole thing with the state, with the Department of Finance, because they essentially have to sort of approve everything that we're doing. And they looked at it, they've taken about the last six weeks to look at it, and concluded that they also would agree that, that this parcel truly does belong to Mr. Miller, and then subsequently, the gentleman that now, that he basically inherited the property, that property and other properties from Mr. Miller. So, so it's our plan to go ahead and execute a quit claim deed to, for this piece of property. The amount to purchase it at the time was only $1,000, and again, it wasn't, it was in kind through an agreement with the, this assess, this maintenance assessment district as opposed to like a check or, you know.
It doesn't sound like there's a clear title, though.
Who's been paying taxes on that piece of property since then?
Well, well, it's, it's, with the county assessor, it's in the redevelopment agency's name.
Well, somebody has to pay taxes.
So they're exempt. We're exempt.
Oh, they're exempt.
Yeah, like, we don't pay taxes on our parcels. So nobody's been paying taxes on this. So it's our recommendation that we just go ahead, and again, Eric's office has looked at it, the Department of Finance has looked at all the documentation, and so it's our intent to just go ahead and execute a new quit claim deed and be done with it.
Yeah, I guess a question to Eric or Don, you know, does there need to be some additional council action at this point?
Well, the successor agency will have to take action to authorize the execution of the quit claim deed.
Well, and also the oversight board.
And the oversight board.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's-
But I didn't understand that it was your intent to add that action tonight.
No, it's not, wasn't tonight. It just came up.
So it'll be on a future agenda?
Yeah.
Come back at a future agenda, that way you can-
That's all I wanted to do, is to bring it to our attention that this, there's still something out there hanging that we need to deal with.
It'll come back to you. You'll approve it, that'll give us clear authorization to do the quit claim deed, and we can clean up the transaction.
Correct.
Okay, I think that accomplishes what we wanted. That's the end of the new business that said none, that we did some. Communication, there is none. Public comments? Anybody care to comment on successor agency? Not, I'll close public comments. Update from Executive Director and Agency Counsel, there is none. Matters from Agency Members, none. Closed session, none. We are adjourned. We reconvene as City Council. Actions taken by City as successor agency to the Temple City Council Redevelopment Agency. We basically approved the consent calendar. Item 18, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Anybody care, second go around on public comments? Okay, public comments are closed. There is no closed session. We are adjourned. Thank you.